Okay, well, thank you all for joining us today for the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee meeting on March 16th at 2:00 p.m. I'd like to call to order the meeting today at 2:02 p.m. My name is Alyssa Gutierrez and I'm the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee Coordinator. Thank you to all the committee members present as well as the public work staff and guests. I'd like to move on to item number two, roll call. Please let me know if you're in attendance. Daniel Harrison. Karen Sanders. I see Karen. Linda Martin.
Present.
Thank you. Andrea Medina.
Here.
Thank you. Gary Ananian. David Caddell. Steve Kinsey. And Christopher McGeehee. It looks like we have Christopher on the call, so I will mark him up here. Okay.
Does he have to be let in? It says he's on hold.
Yeah, I don't have any notifications to let anyone in. Let me see, there's something I could do. I see him leaving, so he might... I see his... Kenny Harris, okay? Are you still on hold? Okay, I'll just give him a minute or two to respond. Okay, now I'd like to move on to item number three on the agenda, to approve the resolution for Keep Kern Beautiful Committee to hold remote meetings. A copy of the agenda and the resolution as well as the meeting minutes were set to the committee and guests. Here is a copy of the resolution number 2022003. This is a resolution of the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee for the period of March 13th, 2022 through April 11th, 2022, pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act. May I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Linda. Can I get a second?
All second, this is Chris McGeehee.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, the motion, none opposed, the motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number four on the agenda, meeting minutes. Here we have a detailed summary of last month's meeting as well as the attachments that we discussed over the meeting, the, our letter of support to our Keep America Beautiful partner regarding a recent grant they submitted, and also their neighborhood cleanup recap that was held on January 22nd. So all this was included in the meeting minutes. Any questions? Okay, hearing no questions, if we can get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 16th, 2022?
I'll make a motion, Alyssa.
Okay, Chris, make some motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Andrea. Andrea, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item number five on the agenda, new business. We've been discussing an upcoming Earth Day Great American Cleanup event happening in late October, asking each of the districts to provide a location, even as a point of contact if you're working with a nonprofit and organizing a cleanup. I do have... I know District 5, Andrea and Chris McGeehee have confirmed the location that they would like to host their community cleanup as well as a graffiti removal. And so, but going down the list, I know Gary Ananian and Dan Harrison aren't here today, who represent District 1, so they can't provide an update, but I'll follow up with them to see if they do have a location confirmed. As far as District 2, Karen, I know Lynn Black is no longer with the committee, but before she left, she did say that as a community organizer, she'd be interested in hosting or being a point of contact in Boron for this specific community event on April 23rd. And I just want to confirm if you are okay with that location and having that cleanup going forward. You're on mute. I'm sorry, you're on mute. I think you can hear us, we just can't hear you. Okay, I see a thumbs up, so it looks like you're okay with that location. Perfect. So although Lynn is no longer with the committee, she is a community organizer, so we know we'll be reaching out to her and with just following up on logistics, and I'll be including you on the communications as well. Okay, moving on to District 3, David Caddell, who is the alternate member but serving as a primary member for the committee since David Duckett is no longer a committee member, he was a primary member. He's not on the call, so I'm going to go ahead and follow up with him separately on an update for his cleanup location. And Linda, moving on to District 4, do you have any updates on that location for April 23rd?
I have lots of fun stuff going on. All are welcome. Okay, so the first thing I have is Saturday, April 2nd, Shaftor and American Refuge will be doing a bulk item, you know, drop-off event. So we're just finalizing all the flyers, so I'll get those pushed out. That same day, it was kind of a closed group. Kiwanis is working on Caltrans on doing a cleanup up Highway 43. I'll get you information on that. On the 16th of the month, I've got the Lions Club doing a little cleanup. I'll get you the street name, it's like a sump. And then Melissa from the Tree Foundation is going to donate some trees to possibly be planted there, so we're excited about that. On the 23rd, to celebrate with Keep Kern Beautiful, I'm trying to arrange a free compost giveaway with the city of Shaftor. I am trying to find some little, like donations for maybe some little vegetable plants, because I wanted to show full circle recycling, you know, with the food scraps and the green waste going into compost, to do the compost giveaway and then do that next thing. I'm hoping to work with the high school FFA students on that one, I'm working on that one. We might also have a little tree planting cleanup, another little sump area. I'm working on the details with that. And then somewhere in there, someone else wanted to do a graffiti cleanup, so I'm just trying to get, because the club's only, they don't meet every week, so I'm just trying to get everything finalized. And what I could do, Alyssa, is once I do, I can... Oh, sorry, I forgot one. On the 23rd, the Women's Club of Shaftor, everyone's just going to walk from their home, pick up trash along the way, and everyone will just meet at Tin Cup Coffee for a cup of coffee, and that's open to anyone that would like to join in. So I'll type all these up and send it to you so that you have them, and then I'll get you pictures after the events.
That'd be great.
Sorry, it's not more organized. I'm just kind of waiting for finalization from everyone on their times and contacts.
No, that's great.
But we've got some fun stuff going. Oh, and then I'm going to meet with Wasco tomorrow about possibly having a bulk item cleanup up in Wasco and their community cleanup.
Wow, a month of activities, that sounds great.
Yeah, it's a busy month.
Awesome, thank you, Linda. See, when I do get that from you, I'll make sure to share it with the committee as well, once you get confirmations on your... Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if anyone knows, I tried to go into Lowe's. Someone told me that Lowe's might do donations of vegetable plants, you know, just the six-packs, I wanted to just divide them up. Or, I don't know, I just thought maybe it would be kind of fun for our community to get those, because we have the Kern County Know Your Numbers program happening right now in Shaftor, so I just thought it would be good. So anyways, if anyone has any ideas, that would be helpful, thanks.
Linda, have you talked with the Grow Academy out there in Shaftor about the plants?
I haven't asked them. I saw that, is it the Arvin one? They're doing their plant sale, so I didn't know if they would have any extra, but that's what I could reach out to.
Yeah, they're doing it in Bakersfield and Arvin, I believe Shaftor as well, so I'm not sure if they have any extra. That might be something they may be interested in after their sale.
Did, do you just go through the school on that?
I can reach out to Adam Alvidres.
Okay, who is the name?
I can reach out to the Adam Alvidres over at the foundation, Education Foundation.
Okay.
And I can, I can reach out to him if you want and then let you know. But you could also go into the school itself and find out locally. It would be a good contact there.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'll, I'll reach out. I just, we're going to provide the compost, so I just thought it would be nice for folks to get like a little vegetable to grow. You know, just something tiny would be awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So moving on to District 5, Andrea and Christopher, they're planning on hosting a cleanup in near Central Street Pass underneath Mount Vernon Avenue over Edison Highway. This was a cleanup spot recommended, and it's, you know, highly littered area with some graffiti, so there's a possibility of graffiti removal as well. And as far as like recruiting volunteers for each of these cleanup events, I do recommend you reaching out to your supervisor, district representative, and seeing if they have like a volunteer coalition of some sort that they work with or that volunteers, or also just maybe possibly partnering with the community organization that you're familiar with, that you've worked with in the past. Once I confirm locations within each district, I do plan on posting, sending out a press release and also doing some social media engagement to encourage volunteers in reaching out directly to each of you or your point of contact to volunteer. And also, for those that will be doing the litter cleanup, for example, I'll coordinate with each of you in providing like the materials needed, like trash bags, vests, and gloves. And so as we get closer to April 23rd, you know, if I can, you know, work with you in getting like an estimated number of volunteers you have to get those items to you. And also for like graffiti removal, I can coordinate with you as well in a pickup time as far as picking up recycled paints and any other painting supplies that may be available at Kern County Public Works Paint Recycling Program, which is held at the Bakersfield Special Waste Facility. I don't know if each of you are familiar with the Stop &amp; Shop. You know, recycled paint, recycled cleaning products are available for free to anyone who's interested, so we can definitely utilize that in making sure you get those items you guys need. Do we have any questions? Okay, hearing no questions, let's move on. And thank you all for sharing your updates. Let's move on to item number six, a presentation by Karina Mendez on recent and upcoming community cleanup efforts.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. Our rapid stats for January and February. We have cleaned up 909 dump sites, totaling 102 tons countywide.
Nice.
They collected 134 mattresses. 105 of those have been recycled, so we're getting those numbers up with our increased crew. And we're up to, I want to say, nine staff members now. And they have also helped cleared out 52 encampments, and of course, our code compliance officers have assisted them with trying to reach out to Flood and get them some help. So upcoming HHW events, household hazardous waste. We have, in Delano this Saturday, we have an event there. We will have LeBeck and Ridgecrest on the 26th. And then next month, just a little glimpse at that, we have Tahatch P on April 2nd, Ridgecrest again on the 9th, and then Taft for the 16th. And just a little review for our bulky waste events. We had an event in Mojave on the 19th of February from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We had, I want to say, about 10 people show up. A little bit of a mix-up there. We had some folks with hazardous waste come in, but luckily, we had some of our rapid crew out there, so they were able to actually collect the waste from them. And then we did just last Saturday, on the 12th, we had an event in Lost Hills. We had about 20 people come out, lots of people taking advantage of the tires. So we have Caesar Chavez out there with us. And that was north of the Lost Hills Park. And then this weekend, we do have an event planned for Delano at the Memorial Park from 8:00 to 12:00 again, and we will have Caesar Chavez there collecting tires again as well. And the next month, we have an event planned in Lake Isabella on April 23rd from 8:00 to 12:00 as well at the Lake Isabella Park. And we're looking forward to potentially do events in Fraser Park, Wofford Heights or Kernville area, Ridgecrest, and then we're trying to do our west side of town as well, or of the county, and focusing to get to Shaftor and Wasco hopefully as well. So that's what's, what's out in our future for us.
Great, thank you, Karina. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to move on to item number seven. Do we have any announcements or reports that the committee members would like to share? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to item number eight, any comments from the Kern County Public Work staff on the call? Okay, hearing none. I have two items that I would like to share briefly. So on March 1st, Keep Kern Beautiful received its second $1,000 donation from the wonderful company Foundation for a total of $2,000 that we've received from them. And so that's great to know, we do have, you know, donations coming in. And at our upcoming April 20th meeting, I'll provide Keep Kern Beautiful's available budget and share a list of cleanup supplies and promotional items that we currently have in stock that we can use at Keep Kern Beautiful related events. And also, the committee can use the April meeting to share any ideas on cleanup materials that we need and can consider if those items are needed for future cleanup events. Also, we can discuss, you know, the possibility of hosting a Keep Kern Beautiful fundraising event in the near future, and also like ways that we can thank our donors and encourage donor participation. So yeah, that's one thing to keep in mind for our upcoming meeting. Also, in the recent presentation that Karina gave, she did mention that an organization that they've been involved with, partnering with the bulky waste collection events, he's at Travis Environmental Corps. Karina, am I saying his name right? Paco Jacobo? Program coordinator with the organization. Well, he reached out because he has a crew of volunteers that they're just very excited to not only volunteer and partner with Kern County Public Works, but also interested in partnering with Keep Kern Beautiful. And so they could also be a resource for these cleanup events we're hosting, especially the upcoming one in April. They, he's very, you know, excited to get his group of volunteers out, so let him know that, you know, we do have these events coming up. He was going to be on the call today, but it doesn't look like he made it. But he could be a great resource for each of the committee members to reach out to for volunteer help. And so I will, I can include his email and contact information in a follow-up email that I provide to the committee. And as Karina mentioned, you know, they've been collecting tires at our upcoming bulky waste collection events, but they also do various other services such as electronic waste collection with other organizations that they partner with. And let's see what else do they do. They also, well, they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and then they're established by the farm worker leader, Caesar Chavez. Work skills and improve the local environment. And just a few things that they do, they recycle cardboard, e-waste, CRV, tires, and they also have an oil education outreach program. So there's all these various resources that, you know, we could definitely use with Keep Kern Beautiful and see how we can piggyback off one another in helping promote our events coming up. So I'll make sure to provide you guys that information. Any, any questions on that? Okay, so hearing none, I'll move on to item number nine. Any comments from the public?
Yes, ma'am. Ray Scott, Keep California Beautiful.
Hi, Ray.
Hi, ma'am. If anyone has a need for, you know, trash bags for your cleanups, please feel free to reach out to me or through Alyssa to me, and I can provide you bags for your events. Arvin is also having a bulky waste drive-through event on April 23rd, just like your Great American Cleanup event. And so I'm sure you're collecting all the data from all county bulky waste events to add to your report for Keep America Beautiful, because it's all, you know, makes your report that much certified with Keep America Beautiful, with the number of events, number of volunteers, number of participants. And then on March 29th, I've been asked to testify at the State Senate for the cigarette butt bill that they're putting through, but what I'll be talking about is behavioral change outreach, just like we do with the K-12 Challenge with Keep California Beautiful or the collegiate program. I don't touch politics, I only talk about programs. And I'll be doing that on the 29th of this month.
That's awesome. And you're going to be there on behalf of Keep America Beautiful?
Keep America Beautiful, Keep California Beautiful, yes.
That's great. Thank you, Ray, for sharing that with us. Do we have any, any additional comments or questions from the group? It looks like Steve Kinsey, you joined us? I think you're still on mute. Am I the only one that can't hear him, or?
I can't hear either. Can you unmute him, Alyssa?
I can only mute. I can't unmute. Well, Steve, well, thank you for joining us. I believe this is my, the first time I've met you, seen you, so I appreciate you joining us on this call today.
There's a chat thing up on the top. If, if he could write, then we could see.
Yeah. There is a chat function, Steve, if you wind up make a comment on something. Okay, well, in the meantime, let's move on to item number 10. As mentioned, our upcoming meeting, next meeting is April 20th. We meet the third Wednesday of each month, 2 to 3. This meeting will also be held remotely via Microsoft Teams. If we don't have any further questions or comments from everyone, I'd like to move on to item number 11 to adjourn the meeting today. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, I got motion to adjourn and then second from Linda. Okay, thank you both. Okay, well, thank you all again for joining us in our committee meeting today, and have a great weekend.
You too, ma'am.
Thank you. Bye.